All righty. The Falkir County School Board meeting is called to order, and at this time if everyone would please stand and join me in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. If you would please, Ms. Callahan, take the roll.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and we will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I move that the school board adopt the agenda as written.
Second?
Motion and a second that the school board adopt the agenda as written. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no, and the motion carries. And we will move to a special, excuse me, special presentation. Ms. Pulver.
Oh, okay. She's going to be, oh, no, she corrected it in ours.
Yeah.
Okay. The Dominion, I mean, the V S B A.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, Dr. Jek, school board members. This is Patrick Welch. He works for Dominion Power. He's a former Falkir High School graduate, class of ninety-nine.
School, okay.
And I'll give this to Patrick right now. He's going to increase that.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'll just speak to everybody and not have to look at the back of my head.
Except they might want you on the microphone. Yeah.
As a Falkir High graduate, you don't always get the opportunity to revisit, you know, places you've been and to give back to the community, but through Ms. Pulver's efforts at the Outdoor Lab and through Dominion, who I currently work for, we've been able to accomplish that. We've done several projects up there for the Outdoor Lab, and then we also have another check for further environmental education for the county, however she sees fit. The need may fit, so I'd like to give that to her now from Dominion. And just thank you for putting in the time and the effort to revive the outdoor classroom, the experience for the kids, and for giving me the opportunity to give back as well. And I appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you very much.
From Dominion, too.
Well, thank you. What year did you graduate?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, okay. All right. Ms. Pulver, are you excited? Do you know what you're doing with this money?
Oh, yeah.
You got it all spent, right?
Spent already.
Yeah.
We have that new A P Environmental Class this year, so I'm trying to spend some stuff there.
Excellent. Great, great. Well, I know what you've done out there so far has been wonderful and much greatly needed.
I can tell you, from having a nine-year-old and a ten-year-old, they want to know when do I get to go play. Daddy gets to go play at the pond all day.
Right.
So it's already at that.
Let me tell you, it'll go quick. Let me tell you.
Absolutely, absolutely, but it's, you know, you don't realize it, but it's really inspired some of the young people, at elementary level.
Yeah. Great, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to announcements. The school board will attend a V S B A's Professional Development Seminar Tuesday, September tenth, twenty thirteen, at five o'clock. There will be a personnel committee meeting Wednesday, September eleventh, at eight a.m. in the school administration conference room. There will be a finance committee meeting Wednesday, September eleventh, at four forty-five, note the change, yes, in the school administration conference room. The Mountain Vista Governing School Governing Board meeting will be held on Thursday, September twelfth, at eight a.m. in the Warren County School Board office, and I'm assuming Duke members. The chairman's night will be Monday, September twenty-third, at five p.m. in the school administration conference room. There will be a school board work session Monday, September twenty-third, at six p.m. in the school administration conference room. There will be a building committee meeting Thursday, September twenty-sixth, at nine thirty a.m. in the school administration conference room. There will be a school board retreat from eight a.m. until three p.m. at the inn at Kelly's Ford Saturday, September the twenty-eighth. There will be a school health advisory committee meeting Wednesday, October second, at eight a.m. in the central complex building conference room. There will be a special education advisory committee meeting Wednesday, October second, at five thirty p.m. in the central complex building A conference room. There will be a school support council meeting Wednesday, October second, at seven p.m. in the school administration conference room, and the next school board meeting is Monday, October fourteenth, at seven p.m. right here in the Warren Green Building. And we move to response to citizens' time, and I do not believe that there is a response, and we move to citizens' time. Community involvement is an important component of a successful school division, and the school board welcomes public input. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personal or personnel issues cannot be discussed. And I've got two names, if you would please, when you come to the podium, state your name and your magisterial district, and Amy Adams is first.
Hello.
Hi.
I believe this is a forum I can come to you and talk in. I am a, my name is Amy Adams. I am a county resident, and I have five children.
And where do you live?
I live in the Plains.
Okay.
Okay.
Just start.
Sure. I've never been here before, so I don't know. I've driven a school bus for ten years.
Oh, wow.
In this county, in Pierce County, it's a couple of years before, and I love my job. I'm coming to you to just make you aware of some issues that we're having with one of the new forms that we've received. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the child waiver forms. I took some notes, 'cause I knew I'd be a little nervous. The child waiver forms we were given for all the kindergartners, first, second, and third graders, because they cannot be let off the bus by themselves, which is understandable. Some of the forms are working great. If they're allowed to be off the bus by themselves, the parents check the form. When we get to the bus stop, we can open the door and let the children go, which is great. Other forms, I'm not sure if it's the form itself or parents not understanding how to fill out the form, but I do have forms where mom has filled out every grandparent, and aunt, and uncle, and neighbor, but dad's name isn't on the form. And the one day when dad takes a day off work, I don't know dad, and his name isn't on my form, so I have to question dad. Dad's not very happy.
Right.
And mom's name is a sloppy signature, so I don't know who I can let the student off with.
Okay. Is there, are there any other issues? You might want to just, I mean, we'd be happy to listen.
Sure.
But it might help if you just sat down with Ms. Born.
Okay, yeah. And because my other concern, too, is just parent responsibility. I know I'm a parent of five children, and if you take the time to listen in the afternoon, which I know sometimes they say that you guys can listen in, somewhere along the way, parents need to be informed that they are responsible for getting the children off the bus or having somebody be there. That is not halfway down the road, standing on their front porch.
Right.
I know the mom, and I would recognize her, but as a substitute bus driver, these poor substitute bus drivers have no idea who these kids are, and when you pull up and you have twenty kids trying to run off your bus, and you don't know their names, and you have a stack of papers, and you have parents that are getting angry, it's getting extremely frustrating.
I can, yes, I'm sure.
So I just don't know who we need to talk to to get it all worked out.
We'll start. Ms. Born will.
You, okay.
Work with you.
So should I meet with you sometime?
I'll step out and talk to you when you're down.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
For driving a bus.
Yes.
Yeah.
Misty Quinn?
Hi, I'm Misty Quinn from Cedar Run. I was here last year a number of times. I'm here over the same issue, unfortunately. It's our bus stop, and our bus stop comes down what's called White Wood Lane, comes to a dead end. You can make a left or a right, they're both called sacks. The rule is a bus cannot go in a cul-de-sac that's less than two-tenths of a mile is a money-saving issue. To the right of the cul-de-sac, I drew you guys a picture, because I've been here multiple times, I thought maybe this would help.
It does.
This direction, it's just over two-tenths of a mile, okay? This direction, where I live, is under one-tenth a mile, so the bus refuses, well, the bus doesn't, but not allowed to come our direction. Last year, there was at least one child this direction. This year, there are zero. The bus is still not allowed to come my direction, so as you see, as it hits this tee, it has to go one way or the other, because it has to turn around at the end of cul-de-sac. It can turn around either one. It currently is going over two-tenths a mile to pick up nobody, when it can come less than one-tenth a mile to pick up five children, two of which are kindergartners. Instead, those five children have to stand at an intersection. I have photos of the intersection, because although the safety issue that I argued last year, you did not agree with, I do believe there is a safety concern. So you'd like to look at the photos.
I've been there.
I know. You didn't agree, so maybe you could pass them on.
Photo number one shows the bus coming towards the bus stop. You will notice that that is only about twenty yards away. You cannot see the stop sign. It is completely not visible, and that is the only direction that has to stop. The other two directions do not have to stop. So the second picture is about ten yards farther, and you can see that you now barely can see the stop sign, and you only can see it because last year the county came up and came out and trimmed those shrubs. As you can see, they are almost halfway up again.
Now, where on this picture are these kids standing?
Right there.
Right.
That intersection is our stop.
Right in the corner, right there.
It's not a corner, it's a three-way intersection. So they are standing in the middle. There are no sidewalks. That is personal property. I have no roads for the kids to stand. Two of the directions do not have stops. Only one direction does, and as you can see, you can't see it. And the final picture is the picture from the bus stop, looking towards the left, which is where our houses are, where the five kids live in that direction, and as you can see, you see no houses. Sorry.
Yeah.
That's looking this way, because you can see no houses. It's not a safe area. I mean, it's a safe area, I'm not trying to say that it's our neighborhood, but there, it's not like we're standing in front of someone's home on a sidewalk where we can be out of the way of traffic. So I'm asking you once again, can we make this change? And I apologize, but I would rather an answer tonight, because I've.
I can't give, we can't give you an answer tonight.
Well, we can't give you an answer tonight, but we'll check in.
We can't. We can't give you an answer.
Okay, you can't give me an answer tonight. Who makes this decision? Can I have that answer?
Well, the same person that's out there talking to, but I mean, we can.
The problem is, is that individual, I believe, is the one that then called me on Friday, informing me that the bus will not come your direction, you will walk down to the bus stop. I got that call on Friday, so that's why I'm coming to you.
Okay.
So do you have any pool in this decision?
We will, we've heard you tonight.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any questions, anything else I can clarify more?
I have two questions.
Yes.
Your children are middle, elementary school age?
No. There are two kindergartners of those five. There is a first grader, there's a third grader, and a fifth grader. The fifth grader has zero parents on either end. She is a fifth grader, but she's completely by herself. The other four children are myself and the house across from us. Literally, our driveways face each other. So if that car, if that bus comes to the end, which it used to do three years ago, it stops, and four children, two of which are kindergartners, again, a first grader and a third grader, get picked up at the end of their driveway.
Well, is it a full-size bus?
Yes, it's a full-size bus, and it has turned around many times in that, yes.
Well, but really, can it exactly safely turn around on that point-two-mile turn?
It fully turns around without having to back up, if that's your question. It can fully turn around in our cul-de-sac, yes.
As easily as it can in that point-two-mile?
As easily, I don't know, but this one often actually has cars parked in it. Ours never does, I will be honest with you, so if there's a car parked in it, I believe it would not. That one might be, I honestly, I can't guarantee you it's the exact same size. I won't, I won't say that, because I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we never have cars parked in it, and many, many times, unfortunately, very recently, she got fired, the bus driver turns around fully without any backing up in our cul-de-sac.
We'll, we're gonna, no.
We'll check into it.
We'll follow up.
I can't say anything now, because, I mean, I've never even been there.
Okay, this is the.
So I wouldn't want to say anything, for me at least, before I've been there and heard the story about why this is.
And I understand that, and can I, can I say one thing, though? We've had the same argument for two years, and you.
And we have.
We have.
We have.
We have. And we've, she's sent people out, you've come out, and you've never agreed with me. And so here I am again, a third year. The only change this year than previous years, because last year, there was one fifth grader on the other side, who very easily could have walked to that corner safely on his own, rather than sending, again, there were kindergartners last year, to that cul-de-sac corner.
We just, time's up. We've got it.
Okay.
And we'll.
Like she said, because she hasn't been there, but I'm saying, multiple people have over the last two years, so it's.
Do we know how to contact you?
I can give you any more information you'd like.
Want you to give your contact information with.
I'd be happy to.
Callahan.
Yes.
Is it Greenwood?
Greenwood Way.
Whitewood and Greenwood.
Whitewood Drive goes into Greenwood Way.
Thank you.
Thank you both. It's bus two for H.M. Pearson.
Misty Quinn.
Misty Quinn.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to reports. We'll start.
Where would you like, would you like to start, Ms. Born?
Yeah, let me just get to my notes real quick. We can find out. Sure, I'll report.
Good.
Congratulations, everybody, on the start of school. I think we said that under twenty-six, but again, great stuff going on. I've been to a lot of back-to-school nights as a parent, which has been very fun, very interesting, a lot of, I will tell you, I think there is a real energy in our schools right now, and there are, I think, more people paying a lot more attention to some of the new programs we have coming on and the ideas of educating children in the twenty-first century. And I think a lot of that, too, stems from our B Y O D policy, and it really is, there are people who disagree with it, people who love it, but I think it's really focusing people on how we educate children and how we use great tools to do that. I'll also say, I'm very excited about our school health advisory board. We are re-establishing the work we have with our wellness champions. There are a lot of great topics that our committee has brought up, and a lot of great discussion, quite frankly, and for an advisory board, I think that's important. We will be bringing forward some ideas on topics for this board to consider, probably through Dr. Jek, about ideas that we have in terms of the advisory, you know, comments from that board, but I will say, I'm very excited about it this year, once again, so.
Why don't you talk about walk-to-school, since you probably know more about that.
Yeah, this October, and I think it can be almost any time during October, but through Parks and Rec, last year we had three schools involved in walk-to-school, and we're trying to get some more visibility again for that, challenging kids to be outside, walk-to-school, not every school in our division, does it make sense or is it even feasible, but there are maybe opportunities for them to get to school and have kids walk around, you know, parents driving in the morning or something like that, but we're looking into that. I know one of the coordinators at Bradley happens to be my wife, so she's running, she's trying to help work that, but I want to thank Parks and Rec, too, for their support of that. It's really important, I think, for us to challenge kids to actually get out there, take themselves to school. I think it builds confidence for them, builds responsibility, plus the exercise is important for them, so we'll be bringing some more items about that this year, but right now it's really only three schools that participated last year. We don't know if all three are going to participate this year.
And that's October ninth.
Right.
Great. Ms. Riordan?
Well, just to tail on to one of Brian's topics for exercise, Brookside Communities is having a five K on October the twenty-sixth, and all of the proceeds are going to benefit Auburn Middle School's library, going to try to update some of the technology and things in the library, but it's wherever they want it to go, that's where, you know, whatever they want to do with it. I would encourage everybody to come on out, you can walk it, you can run it, you can crawl it, you know. For those of you that are runners, it will be professionally timed, and we're still looking for sponsors, and we're also having a one-mile fun run for the kids, and all the, if you participate, you get a T-shirt, and we're going to have sponsors that are going to set up some booths and stuff and show off some of the businesses from the area, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun. We're going to have music, we're going to have some light refreshments, so I would encourage everybody to check out the website or go on active.com and just punch in Brookside Fall Five K. That's it.
Ms. Wolf?
Just again, big congratulations to the opening of Falkir High School, because I know that took a lot of work, a lot of people's time and energy, and it was amazing, so that was great. A couple of things, I just want to say, a couple of topics that we're going to talk about in our health advisory committee is we're going to talk about, get stats on teen pregnancy, and also on substance abuse in the county, how children and families and how that statistics are trending, and see if we need to do something about that, so those are the couple of things we're going to be talking about. The only other thing I wanted to say, thank you to Ms. Callahan, she coordinated on October ninth. It's going to be a couple, a few of our legislators are going to visit our school, come to Falkir High School, Senator Vogel and Delegate Weaver, and I know Delegate Cole and Liam Feltzer have been invited, I don't know if they've R S V P'd yet, but from about nine-thirty to noon, we're going to be showcasing our Falkir High School and all our career and technology education outstanding programs that we have to our delegates, so thank you for organizing that.
We haven't had a personnel, we're having a meeting on Monday, or Wednesday, rather, and building hasn't met, but we did have Parks and Rec, and I'll bring you up to date on a couple of things there. At the last meeting, we had some officials from the town talking about the Timber Fence Trail, and.
Somebody just asked.
And we did have a supervisor there also, so they were looking for some sort of a commitment from schools just to say that we're on board.
That would remind me where that is.
Well, it's not, it's nowhere at this point, other than, what they wanted to know is if we are in agreement that.
We want to work with them.
We want to work with them, so that they can finish the trail from where it is now over at the end of.
Timber Fence Parkway.
Timber Fence, to get it over to the wharf, and that would necessitate them crossing school's property. So not knowing where it's going to go, but we certainly are in agreement that we will work with them if we can, and I think we ended it by saying that they're, I think they're now ready to move forward and have some professional design, come up with some design options.
And bring it to us.
Yeah.
They just didn't want to go through a lot of work, people who weren't going to be on board, type thing, and.
If we weren't, right.
No, that would be a great plus for the whole community to have that opened up to our kids who walk to school.
I'll bring the motivation if they bring the cash.
You know, they're not looking this way for the cash, so.
And then, in your district, the Pierce Trail, that's moving forward.
That's good.
And there needs to be some discussion on, as to where it's going to end, because I believe actually the fire department needs to get into that discussion as far as their property on, that's back there also. So anyway, that's moving forward, and as is safe routes to school, and I believe the negotiations are complete.
Right, yes.
To acquiring that last little piece of property.
Good.
So that's moving forward. So we're going to be walking everywhere.
So do they need some kind of formal thing from us, or just really? Lot of exercise.
Yeah.
No, I think it's great.
Yeah. Okay, and Dr. Jek?
I just would report that we had our first school support council meeting the year last week. It was very well-attended. It was a very good meeting, a very, very, very good energetic, energized group of parents, so we're looking at some different projects, actually, that were sort of put out as potentials for the next school year, which I think is really the role of the school support council, among other things, communication, and then taking on projects, so we're going to be talking about some different things as the school year progresses. One idea that was put out that I'm really interested in is the farm-to-schools program. That's a really good program. Logistically, I don't know if it could or would work in Falkir County, I don't know, but in my short time here, we have a lot of farms.
We do.
And a lot of hungry kids, so something that really got my attention during the meeting that I'm going to be talking more with S S C about, so very good meeting.
Good. Okay. Then we move to Ms. Kotoff, financial management report.
You have for you the report preliminary as of June thirtieth. It's the same as you've seen in the past. They hope to close the books today at five. It was delayed. We're still working on our reports for the state. What we're looking at is still at one-point-three million, just over one percent. We'll be taking to the finance committee on Wednesday a recommendation for year-end.
Okay.
The main pieces are going to be student information system, four buses, and energy management controls. Those are our main kind of pieces, some others, but that'll be coming out, it'll go to the finance committee, then it comes to the school board at its work session, then to the next meeting, and then adoption the following meeting.
Okay, great.
And by then, we'll have, it'll, so it'll go to the board of supervisors in November at the same time that the audit report's coming out for verification of the numbers.
Brian, you start it.
No, I'm sorry. I got it.
Okay. Anybody else? Nope. Thank you. And next, human resource department, Ms. Downs.
Good evening. In front of you, you have the Human Resources Monthly Report. On recruitment update, we have certified vacancies, we have four remaining to be filled, and for classified, we currently have fifteen. The eight school nutrition workers have been filled.
Oh, okay.
So we're starting to narrow it down.
Good.
We still are in need of school custodians, so we are actively recruiting for those and running ads.
Yeah.
Any questions this evening?
Okay. Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move to consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the following minutes of the August twenty-sixth school board meeting and work session, monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, revisions to Section Five Personnel Policies one-dash-one, excuse me, five-dash-one dot five, five-dash-two dot eight, and five-dash-three dot seven, and revision to Section Five Personnel Policy five-dash-three dot four, five.
Motion and a second that the school board approve the minutes of the August twenty-sixth school board meeting and work session, the monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, revisions to Section Five Personnel Policies five-dash-one-point-five, five-dash-two-point-eight, and five-dash-three-point-seven, and revision to Section Five Personnel Policy five-dash-three-point-five. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We move to information items, and Dr. Jek's going to give us a report on the opening of school.
Well, as you already know, school opening was very good, very smooth, and I did want to point a couple of things out, because I'm very, very excited and proud of the fact that the message that we've been, well, sharing and the subjects we've been talking about were related to twenty-first century teaching and learning, STEM initiatives, some principals and some directors, and senior staff have really taken on some great pilot projects. I just want to list a few that you may not be aware are out there. Bromfield Elementary is piloting a STEM program for all grade levels. They basically traded a position rather than hiring a reading specialist, they hired a STEM specialist to work with all grade levels. The tech camp for next summer, that planning group is, has been meeting and putting together some really good ideas for next summer, some really meaningful tech camps for elementary through high school-age kids. Working on, putting together, Patty Kershaw's doing this work, STEM advisory group, to sort of help chart the course for the next, what I call it is the now, the soon, and the later, sort of chart that course as we move down the road. Science Fair, this is very exciting. We are moving forward with our first annual regional science fair. Very excited, and have a benefactor who, I won't jinx it by naming any names, but a benefactor who's willing to put some resources towards that program, and we have someone agreed to serve as the coordinator. So very exciting. That would be a division-wide, not every grade level, right now, it's in the draft phase, but wouldn't be every grade level to start with. We'd start with middle, high school, and then add all grade levels later on. And then I'm really happy to, I'm pleased to know that folks are already using our labs, a PAM, thank you for that. I, you know, I'm just getting wind of some folks who are already using it, that's very exciting. Really pleased with that. And then the mathematics potential project, which Dr. Mitchell is spearheading, which is really, is putting the wheels on expanding the math opportunities for kids, more higher, higher-level math opportunities for students, removing barriers for students taking upper level math. So there's some really good things going on, but most importantly, it's folks who are taking the initiative and are energized, as Brian said, and who are sort of taking a risk, and be willing to step out, and rather than hiring a reading specialist, hire a STEM specialist instead. That, that takes a bit of a risk. And so anyways, wanted to thank all those people, it's a lot of different people involved with that, but just excited about the direction we're going, specifically with STEM, which includes math and some other things. So just wanted to mention those things to you.
You've been busy.
Can I ask a question about the science fair? You said it was regional and then divisional. Is it regional, or is it only our?
No, it's, it's going to be a regional fair, but not, it's regional, public school, this is all draft, by the way.
Okay.
Focker County Public Schools, and then homeschool students, and private school students. So they all have the opportunity to compete, and it would be for, starting off middle and high school grades. But we would want, we were, we're hoping, and our goal is to make it a Big Ten, involve as many folks as we can in it. And the idea is to complete it, the fair, by the end of February, so then students could go on and compete in the, truly in the regional fair, the winners could statewide. So that's sort of the goal, that's why it's a bit of a rush right now, to make sure we get this thing off the ground, do it right, so kids who are, who are the winners can move on and compete statewide. Did I get all that right, Dr. Mitchell?
Don't forget DMI.
BMI.
Wow.
How funny.
That's great.
Okay, that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. And an enrollment report from Ms. Kotov?
Yes, each year, I come back and report on the enrollment as of the day after Labor Day. We always have a jump at the end of the first week to that point.
Right.
Normally, it's about 50 or 60. This year, it actually jumped 90, 94. So it puts us slightly ahead of where we were last year, which is good. That's what we were projecting for ADM, is about the same as last year, so revenue's a little good at this point. It also looks good, I think, when we sit down at the September 30th number to do our 10-year enrollment projections. I think that this may be an indication that we have stopped having declining enrollment, and we actually will either level out or maybe increase, which is a good thing. So any questions on the numbers? We looked specifically at one of the schools, Brumfield, because they dropped significantly, and it had, had to do with the fifth grade class of 100 and some students moving on up to middle school, and an elementary, a kindergarten class of only like 85, I think it was.